It's done.
Okay, welcome everyone to our work session Monday, July eleventh and Commissioner Bowles and here with Commissioner Harvey and Commissioner Fur. Our first item is a discussion interaction on approval as the minutes for the commission work session that was held on August fourth, two thousand and twenty five.
So move second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
My motion carries. Thank you. Item two, discussion regarding Westbridge recently end development agreement. There are no names on here. It's just a free for all. I assume it's.
I had to put her on there. Thanks for being a chair.
I had to find the right, right page. There's a Sharon page and a public page.
We, we just wanted to kind of catch up back up with you guys after the tabling, just figure out what we need to do to get it to a decision, either either up or down. I'm just looking for some correction from you guys. And if there's just time, then it'll be a quick work session. If you want more than that, let us know.
I'm gonna go to you, Commissioner Harvey.
I said my piece in the meeting, review the minutes. I'm good. I don't have anything more to add. And, and this is gonna sound really arrogant or bold or whatever. I'd have her goes, you guys are especially with the concession on the river. I realize that you guys found out. That were there, that there's a concession on the river. And with you guys getting that much more property, those things that I've asked for on that commission meeting should be easy. Should be like a little rubber stamp that you said boom, yep, no problem. I think I'm pretty good with where it ended up on the along the shoreline. As long as there's a genuine earnest attempt. Uh, with the DWR, DNR going out there and with the private guys and. I'd like a little more than a year, but I don't think I'll get that as a second vote on that, but. To the two bridges and some of that other stuff we talked about, absolutely. And from that.
So the two bridges we're agreeing to in the development agreement. So I think we checked that box, correct?
Right.
So that's done. As far as the DWR goes, we, you know, we, we did subsequently meet with them. They provided a letter echoing the, you know, the collaboration that we're, that we're involved in. They remain positive as well as we do that organically through. The engineering and, and other mitigating efforts within the community as it relates to wetlands and FEMA areas that, you know. We, we are all very confident that we're gonna get to a place that is mutually beneficial for both parties. Their letter that they sent was a hundred percent reflective of the conversation that we had. So we were very happy. Check that box. And I would even go as far as to say during the commission or during the meeting last week. I mean, they were there. You even invited them to come speak. I, we're good. Like we're, we're, we are doing what two. Landowners neighboring should do in we're collaborating and I believe they feel the same. So.
The other thing I wanna add on, on to that is that the river concession during the planning commission meetings, that, that wasn't something that we came to lightly on the hundred foot versus the three hundred foot along the river. And the, the history of that, just to remind everybody of the progression of that discussion. The, the hundred foot was discussed as a minimum and we know that there's gonna be wetlands mitigation that we'll have to do along there. So it's likely to grow in a lot of places. And far exceed even the hundred foot in some of the wetlands areas along the river. But the other thing that we did in that was we conceded the, the additional industrial byway along with that. During the discussion about the hundred foot versus three hundred foot along the river. And so I feel like there's already been exchange of just, uh, you know, kind of a tit for tat relationship with what we asked for. In getting the hundred foot minimum instead of three hundred foot and gave in exchange for that industrial byway. And that industrial byway was a pretty controversial talk topic when we talked to the DWR about that. When we showed the WMA, the plan for the county's general plan for transportation in the future and shows that industrial byway going through the. The WMA, they're pretty upset with that. And we felt like a good compromise was, look, if we can get some relief on where our minimums go on the river so that we can make it a, a, a pretty good trail that. Isn't a burden for the county long term is the minimum that we need to reserve and set aside for a usable trail system. But it also gives us some flexibility. We can give up some of that space for the industrial byway and get it away from WMA. So it goes across our property and not theirs because. They told us flat out, they, they would never let that happen. And so we kind of felt like that was a good compromise and that was the history of it in planning commission, but a lot of that wasn't discussed in, in any of the county commission work sessions. Or certainly not Tuesday's, you know, work or voting session either of public hearing. So I just wanted to kind of take everybody through some of the history there.
Yeah, we probably spent tuning rework sessions on that, on that topic.
Thank you. Rick, would you go back and have either Charlie or somebody in your office, listen to my comments again? And make sure that those comments that I made, those things are included. I want to specifically, when this is brought before us again. I want to specifically make sure that those are audibly. Uh, read back and what the, that are included in those in that.
There was one item on those on your list of, of things that needed to be addressed. Most of those were covered in the MDA. There was one that's not covered in the MDA that we do need to discuss. And it was obligating us that the twenty five fifty bridge will go in first, that that'll be the first one. And so we do need to make that change for sure on the MDA.
I saw you writing that down and that's a big thing.
Yeah.
The other thing too is, is, uh, for me, it's look, uh. I don't know about your modeling with all due respect, but for me, quite frankly, allowing this development agreement to move forward with this kind of density. Is a huge thing. Never been done before in Weaver County. Never been done before in Weaver County. And so I want there to be some kind of modeling on home, on, on homeowner ownership. I mean, is this something that, that you guys are gonna come in? I, I want there, Charlie, I want there to be something on ownership like we did with JDC Ranch. Where, where it, it, there is a, cause we've, that, that's been a proven. We know funding will allow that. That's a, that needs to be a proven or that's a proven model. Where we have some homeownership opportunity out there. There'll be plenty of ways to make money on the backside with rentals, but I want families. To be able to go in there and be able to buy a home and. And have some homeownership and create some wealth. That's absolutely, that's huge for me. So even if it was a condo within an apartment building.
Sure.
You know what I mean?
So Charlie had mentioned something in the meeting that maybe we can have you circulate that market study. So we, we. We engaged a, you know, a national firm, very well known firm to do a, a, a very, very in-depth market study. For us to understand, right? So, so to your point, for us to even model. What the community shape and function should look like. And so we did share that with Charlie. I wonder if we just circulate that. It's, it's a massive report. It's a hundred and eighty pages, I think, but. I think the summary to that report is to tell you that. This is a for sale community. That is not to say that there won't be, the city center function is going to function largely as.
Absolutely.
A city center.
I get.
But outside of that city center, which is really the form based code areas are gonna function as a city center outside of that. All the remaining zones that we're asking for and that we worked diligently with staff last year to get approved. All of those zones were approaching that. This is a for sale homeownership community. So this is not something that we are looking at from through the lens of. You know, largely rental, uh, community. This, this will be the, the lion's share of it will be for sale. And this market study does a marvelous job. Of breaking down all the different product types, the affordability. It, they do a great job. So we did share that with Charlie. I would suggest that we circulate that to you. And like I said, huge report, but the summary pages do a really great job and kind of wrapping that up. And then you can then see how we're approaching the community, which is homeownership. And then the flex home product that we're, uh, gonna roll out here gives again, just. A massive opportunity for that entry level attainability that everybody's talking about in Utah. And this is also, actually, I think, I think Sharon, you brought up a great comment in the meeting. That with the wide range of products, right? This is a multi-generational community, right? Attainability for the first time home buyers all the way up to, um, you know, there will be active adult components. And this will be, this will, will serve every product type and generation that's, that's looking for.
In your summary of that, uh, uh, study that you did. Uh, I'd like to see specifically related to seniors or fifty five plus communities, please.
Yeah, there is, there is absolutely a component to that and, and.
You, we were successful down in Vineyard to be able to see some of that.
Yeah.
But to me, the amount of that and you, and here's the great part. You told us how just. You were surprised by how successful it was. Okay, so let's take that model and quadruple it. Uh, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Because it's, I think it'll even be more so up here. And the time between when those were built and when these will be built. With the percentage of children population entered into the, it, it will be more so. So study or not. Uh, having lived in this community my whole life and looking at just the, the algorithm, the algorithms related to age. I'm concerned that that's the case. So that's a big deal for me.
Hmm. Yeah. And like I said, this, this study addresses.
Yeah.
All product, right?
And just to, just to put it in perspective, um, I know it's a big deal, but the. Take, for example, the Vineyard community. That was a twenty four hundred unit entitlement on that portion of the Vineyard community. Now, the rest of the stuff north of the Vineyard Connector, Main Street, that bridge that we went down to and everything, that has unlimited density.
Yeah, I remember that. That's the old vineyard scale.
Yeah. And so I'm talking about just the stuff south of the Vineyard Connector Street. Um, that main road to the south is twenty four hundred units. The, the two, um. Age targeted fifty five plus communities that went in. They went in, uh, not deed restricted. So they were basically HOAs that catered to. You know, single level living patio homes and stuff with, uh, age targeted marketing. So. It's, it was intended to incentivize fifty five plus ownership. And out of that twenty four hundred units, that was a hundred and sixty lots. And so. I know it's a big deal, but percentage wise, it's gonna be a drop in the bucket compared to what we're trying to do. The unit count there is not intended to. Uh, make us rich. The, the, the fact of the matter is this project is so long term, probably none of us in this room are gonna. See the, the fruits of what's being developed out there by the time we retire. Um, it will create a lot of wealth, but it's gonna create a lot of homeownership opportunity for the future residents of Western Weaver County. But what we are trying to do is ensure that there's enough creativity in that plan with the thirteen thousand unit mix. We're trying to ensure that there's enough creativity within that density to ensure a viable city center. So that the people don't have to live out there, but then drive all the way back into West Haven or Ogden to shop.
Understand.
See what I'm saying?
Understand.
And so a portion of that will be age targeted just because the market's gonna drive it. And will we look for opportunities to diversify the product into those kinds of segments that will increase the rate at which those products sell? Absolutely. It'll, and you're probably right. It'll probably be quite a bit more than the half a percent it was. In our Vineyard entitlement. Does that make sense?
Huh?
It'll probably be three or four times that, like you're saying. And so our market study does cover that, but it also, what the market study does do effectively is it shows us that we need the kind of flexibility on density. To ensure a viable city center out there. And fortunately, the county zoning, the way it stands encourages homeownership and has a lot of really good creative zoning that will allow condos and, and small town homes. That will be the path to a homeownership for people that can live out in a future city center and live out there and, and have. A less high hurdle to jump through to get, to get into homeownership. Does that make sense? I don't know if I'm explaining that very well.
I understand.
The flexibility is what that, um, entitlement really gives is the city center flexibility.
Madam Chair, that concludes my, my question.
You try to have a question. Um, I don't. Disagree with Commissioner Harvey. I'd like to see that study. But tell me where this comes in the process, because when, when you talked to Commissioner Harvey about senior doors. I thought that was more in the subdivision approval and beyond this point.
If, if senior doors is a, a rule that we don't already, already have in place, we're gonna wanna capture it in this part of the process. Uh, once the development agreement is done, we probably can't apply it after that unless we have an ordinance requiring that to happen.
I also, um, I'd have a little bit of an issue with that term and I don't know how you define it, but, um. You just said targeted, a targeted community. I don't like the requirement because. I don't know. I guess if, if someone who's fifty four is married to someone who's sixty and a sixty year old size, like.
Yeah.
I don't like that restriction. I like the target. It draws what I think you wanted to draw. It might draw some other types of families, a few, and I think that's good for a community. So I don't want it to be that restrictive, but, um. I think if it has to be captured here, then it should. But I'd like to look at the market study. And see if that can just be implemented as part of this.
And just for some conversation around the restricted part. So there is two ways to approach that. You can do age restricted or deed restricted. But typically, when we market a deed restricted, age restricted community, that will be. Massively unsuccessful, meaning we will literally have buyers not buy in there for that reason. Because they also don't want that restriction whenever the time comes that they want to sell.
Yeah.
So age targeted is the, and again, age targeted allows. What all developers and I believe all communities want, which is to allow the market to drive the development.
It allows the opportunity basically without, without forcing it and sitting there with MDE might sit there with empty units, you know?
Yeah.
Those are my thoughts on that.
So I, I, and I, I concur with those thoughts that restricted becomes difficult. It becomes a. A constraint on the development, on the natural and organic development. Where age targeted is something that all as, as developers, we're always probing that market. Updating our market research and when the market tells us that it's time for age started, we, we do it. And so. That's a long answer for, we absolutely want senior housing in there. Absolutely. It's a well-rounded community with it.
That's a good question. Did your study, sorry if that's okay. Uh, did your study take into account? Um, the development that's proposed in the Chinatown Port project area for job creation? Did, did that look at that? We've got, we've got a really, we've got a really good absorption study, um, that we completed about a year and a half ago. That might be beneficial for you guys to take a PCAT, um, or you know, if you're always, you know, looking. Your housing would, your housing would support the job creation that we're working on out there.
Yeah.
And we're anticipating about twenty five thousand jobs in the next twenty five years gauge if that was, those numbers we got from Chris a while back. That's sound about right.
So we, we certainly mentioned it. I don't think we had any data. Uh, so we'd love the data that we could bring in.
Share the data.
But it's certainly, uh, it certainly mentions and, and contemplates the approved inland port area for sure.
And I think that would address some of the concerns with, you know, the organic nature of the development out there because you're gonna look at. You're gonna attract retirees, but you're also gonna attract a younger demographic that, that is gonna wanna start their careers, but. End their careers out there. So it's a, it's a longevity piece. And making sure you're building that type of what I call graduation housing. So you, you know, you start out with the starter homes and you graduate into the larger homes as you move up in your position. So we're hoping to create long-term permanent employment out there.
Great. And then, and this, this development, one hundred percent captures that, right? From, from attainable to senior age targeted, absolutely. I mean, for that matter.
We'll get you that information.
For, for that matter, this, this community will absolutely, it'll have assisted living facilities. I mean, it'll have, it'll have everything. By the time it's completed, right?
So bad. I'm sure you might make a comment. Do you have any language in there right now that talks about any of that graduated housing?
The market study, uh, no, not specific in the.
Not in the DA.
No, not in the DA. No. I think, again, I think that's. I think that's why we did and spent all the work on the zoning, right? So that the zoning would drive that, right? And allow for, you know, that wide range. And that's why we created, you know, we redefined a couple of zones, created a couple of zones to give that full, you know. Width and breadth to be, to allow for all of the proposed product types that we're looking at, which are captured in the market study.
So I mean, would you be comfortable to address Commissioner Bowles and Commissioner Harvey's point is to work with his zoning to have some of that language in there? Would that? Be something you'd be amenable to?
For sure. I think, especially if it talks about age targeted and not, not deed restricted. Right.
I think we're open to that language.
Yeah, I think.
And to Charlie's point, we, if, if we wanna address it that way, we should begin to do it in the MDA.
Yeah. 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 I, I don't think.
Cause subdivision won't allow that to transpire.
Right.
I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with that, Charlie. Um, and I know where you stand, Commissioner Fur. I. I just wanna make sure that as much detail as we can exist in the MDA because with this length of a project, none of us are gonna be here.
Yeah.
And if everything's well defined, then future commissions will have the path already set.
I see. Let me, let me, um, let me give you guys maybe a slightly different way to look at this. I mentioned just a minute ago that if, uh, if it's not in the law or if it's not in the development agreements, probably not something you could apply after you give them the zoning. One of the ways that we wrote the development agreement and that the applicant has, uh, I wanna say maybe a little typically agreed to. Is that, um, the Weaver County ordinances can change and can change and be applied to this project. Uh, not so much that they would take a haircut on density or configuration or street layout, stuff like that. But if you were to come up with a, a rule in the future that were to say, you know, every, uh, project has to result in at least five percent moderate income. Every project has to result in at least ten percent this or that. That's a, that's a standard that you can adopt and apply as time goes on. If, if we find that they're not hitting their. Um, uh, the targets that, that we're talking about today. So.
To an already adopted MDA?
Yeah.
From all that?
Yeah. And that's what, that's the way the MDA is written. It's written to say that, that we can create future laws. Um, one of the things that I talked to these guys as a, a attorney about who was, who was pretty adamant against going in that direction at, at first, um, is. Today, we could just give them zoning. You know, we don't have to have a DA. But if we just give them the zoning and they go file for a subdivision plat or whatever. They can do whatever is allowed under that subdivision plat. And that doesn't mean the county can't adopt new rules to say that your houses have to all be pink. Um, you, you know, the county could do that and just through, without having a DA, just going through the subdivision route. They'd have to follow those new rules as they're applied. So the benefit that a development agreement gives the developer, a lot of developers say, no snapshot of today's codes. We don't want anything else to be able to apply to us in the future. Um, as a county planner, as you guys as employee, I wouldn't advise doing that for thirty to fifty years. That's just way too much time to obligate the county to some future, um, commitment. But the way that we have written this and the agreement you're looking at is actually the template that we're using for all the other reasons that we're doing, even the smaller ones. Is to say, we agree with the number, we agree with the general, um, concept and the layout. Um, we agree with the things that we specifically agree to in the agreement. But we don't agree to anything above and beyond that. And as time goes on and as things change, the county commission still gets to make new rules.
And I need to chime in here. So what I, you know, I was originally. Probably in a vote for this. The issue I see now is the more restrictions that go into this, I'm probably gonna go the other way. For one fact, and that's that we're trying to make a fifty year decision on what the market will make. And, um, I'm not prepared to say, look, and again, whatever we say in here, ten or fifteen, twenty years, not gonna make a lot of difference, but the more restrictions we put in there. Um, the, the more to get away from the market, the market will drive this. So you, you may just lost my vote because then it'll be up to these two. But anytime you put restrictions on, on the use, on what's gonna happen, you're saying that you're smarter or more informed to where the market will be in ten or twenty years. I can tell you for the last fifty years, probably close to sixty, the market will decide what happens to that property. Regardless of who thinks they're smart in this room, gonna do it. You're not as smart as the market. Market will take it. So anyway, that's my point.
That's the.
So I probably, just so you know, I'm probably going the other way on this. The more restrictions are in there.
Back to my original question, when I, uh, when I mentioned the market study and asked if that could be an attachment to this, because I, I would feel a lot more comfortable with that. That shows what the market study says today. But it's more of a reference document.
Yeah.
Instead of a binding document, because I agree with you, Commissioner Fur, that, that the market study who says what we think today. It may change, but if it's somehow referenced in there and that that, that the market study would be the target of this development, then if that changes. Then it would change, then it would change the.
And the market study is something as we get into development, that is something we will update literally annually, right? I mean, every year we will have an update to our market study because we wanna keep track of that. So let me, I, I'm glad you brought that up because I was gonna say that. If we approach the MDA with restrictive language. That is a guaranteed that that MDA is gonna come back to a future commission. And that's, we don't, none of us want that. And I've heard all of you. Look, you know, it's great that you're care so much about the MDA that it doesn't come back. But if we put restrictive language, guaranteed it's gonna come back.
Well.
And, and we shouldn't do that.
If you tie the, I'm telling you this, if you tie the current market study to that and put concrete around it.
Correct.
I paid for.
Yeah.
Too many damn market studies in my life.
That's right.
That from the smartest guy paid large money for them. And guess what? Five years later, they were almost completely wrong.
Yeah, if it's something that's.
So. And let's be real.
So when you, if we tie that to the, yeah, then I'm, again, I'm a no vote.
And just to be real clear.
So.
We did the market study when, when Charlie came to us and said, hey, will you help us reform the code? We said, yes, we will do that. We then engaged in the market study because we probably weren't gonna do it until now. But we chose to do it then.
Right.
To get a full view of our product slate, the slate of products. So that then when we, when we engaged with Charlie and team to reform zoning, we were doing it with the information of this is the slate of products. So the reason I bring that up is the, the reformed and approved current zoning. That really, that drives the bus, not the market studying. We use the market study to inform that. And now that is the engine that will take us down thirty, forty, fifty years. And to, and I, I appreciate Charlie's comments. If ten years from now, something needs to change structurally in the code. It's, it's gonna come back and, and we will, we will have to adhere to that. And we're also saying, logic tells us that if the market's changing, that then thereby changes something in the code. We're gonna more than likely approve it anyway or, or agree to it because it's gonna affect our, our development. And whatever's changed, this is gonna change us.
So it already has the flexibility, whether, whether the flexibility is built into it or whether it comes back.
Right. So the market study is truly informative document.
The market study being referenced, I'm totally fine with this. I know that it will change.
Yeah.
And then, and, and if it's not written into the MDA, but it's just referenced.
Yep.
Then I'm comfortable with, with that because, um, to Commissioner Fur's point, it will, it will change. But.
Here, here's, here's one suggestion that I would, that I think I can speak for both of us that we would agree to that possibly could go into this language. If. In the future, there needs to be some type of amendment from the developer coming back to the, to the county. That I would require an updated market study to inform whatever the request is. Does that make sense? So if.
Yeah.
If ten years from now, we say, you know what? We really need to insert this, this product type. And so because that, we're gonna ask for a zoning.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. If Stephanie's office is successful in creating sixty thousand jobs instead of twenty five thousand, then it creates.
That's a great way to do it. I think that's a good way to do it.
Again, this market study, as far as I'm concerned, is good for today. But in six months from now, we don't know what's gonna happen.
It's, it's what's driving the MDA. And if the MDA requires a new market study for variation, then I.
Right.
For, okay. I'm good with that. I mean, let's, what we need to have out there as far as the key components of this, and I said this. Too many times is infrastructure. If you have the interest, what could kill this deal is if we have poor infrastructure.
Yeah.
You know what I'm talking about? But if you have the proper infrastructure, then the market will tell you what product to put there. But if you have the proper infrastructure, then the market will tell you what product to put there. You don't need anybody at this table telling you, the market will tell you that, I'm fine if it's not that if the uh this market study is not part of that N D A, that it could be informative, it could be used as a as it gets updated. But the minute you tie today's market study to something fifty years from now.
Doesn't work.
Yeah, you know.
Yeah.
Then we're idiots.
And we've we've repeated over and over that what this entitlement and what the M D A gives us is it gives us the structure, a framework to work within that still allows creativity and flexibility to bring that infrastructure to this. And then the market can help us evolve this community so that it's a successful city center. That's really what we're trying to create here.
And this is similar, this is similar language to the traffic study, meaning we are agreeing already in the M D A that says if we choose to alter something infrastructurally, because we get engineering and the engineering told us, hey, we gotta do this differently, we can't bring anything to you without an updated traffic study, engineering, then we would bring that to you, ask for a change, so this would really address the market side that, hey, we're doing, we're gonna be smart about whatever variations that may come, and we'll do that with information that comes in the form of an updated market study. Happy to agree to that.
Okay.
Yeah, Commissioner, just to slug the general plan, this is exactly where the general plan says we should go, and as as we were looking at their um their proposed uh changes to our um development code, our our zoning ordinances, specific to adding two new ordinances and making some pretty big adjustments to try and modernize those. Um our target was, what does the general plan say? Does it say that we want to um age in place? We wanna live, work, play uh in our community, uh and if it does, it does say that, if it does say that, we need to make sure our our ordinances are responsive to that.
Just for giggles, Madam Chair.
Okay, but we're on time, so make it short.
Space for a city office. Space for a school.
Already addressed.
Schools.
Yeah, already addressed.
Space for fire and police. Thank you.
Yeah.
How was that?
That was really pretty quick.
Madam Chair, my, I'm just making.
In the same lecture.
This is not an uncomplicated agreement, however, it's simple, and that's what was so attractive to planning commission, is because it addresses all the concerns that are coming up in here. The planning commission has never delved into a a a uh master development agreement like we have on this one and the one on Bennett Farms. We literally were paragraph by paragraph, even on some of the legal stuff where we had no business being, and we we flushed that out eventually. But as far as what we're talking about here, what Charlie just mentioned was what made it work was that as the zoning changes, as the needs change, it the M D A allows that change to happen. So, thank you.
I've got one last thing now. Sorry.
What I have as as property around that area grows or is contiguous with, how does that change?
We've identified some area around it that's adjacent for the possibility of being annexed into like, you know, our method of logic.
Um doesn't that change the size of the city center?
Uh the the property that we've identified as being adjacent to with the possibility.
Residential.
Is is.
Thank you.
Yeah. Not. So city center is.
It'd be supplementary, and you can annex it into the M D A and and complement what's going on, but the city center's been sized for the whole area.
That's right.
And I'm sharing.
We're good, but we don't have to.
I recap on those four items that I think we have. So I just wanted to make sure uh the four items that I had specific questions about, and Commissioner Harvey, we, I did make some pretty feverish notes on on the questions and comments that you're making in the meeting last Tuesday, so um I only walked away with four things that I wasn't quite sure how to answer.
I'll look at it again. It's okay, by virtue because of our time here, I'll come back to that.
Yeah.
Or we can sit down and clean.
Okay.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
You did?
I know, so you're looking at that right there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is a discussion regarding fairways, drag trail, Ashley Toman, Charlie Ubert, Sean Wolf, Larry Myers, John Lewis. Stephanie. Are you really Stephanie?
No, I'm.
And we get Stephanie. Welcome, Ashley, you're up.
Great. Gary, this is all your fault.
So, thank you for your time, and what we wanted to talk about was the addition of a trail along the Fairways Drive Road Project Extension that's currently under construction. Um we bid it out just as a road project, just putting in the road, uh some of that to try and streamline getting it done this year. Since then, we've uh been getting some calls and input to, you know, what about a trail? What about a trail? So we've talked to the contractor, and he says, yeah, actually now would be the better time to do it, because we've got the equipment here. We've got grading underway, and to tie in the edge of the road with native material, you know, you would, it would save you time to do it now. So um what we are looking at is coming to you, the commission, to ask for impact fee money uh to do this trail. And so I had, I I believe it's point eight four of a mile, so just under a mile, eight tenths. Uh this is a project that was on our, on the Ogden Valley General Plans Act of Transportation Act, is that correct?
Sounds right.
Journey?
Yep.
And um so we'd look at putting the trail on the north side and asking for impact fees roughly three hundred and fifty thousand to grade it, put down road base, eight inches of road base, three inches of asphalt um from where the asphalt ends right now um to the to the east, the asphalt's really wide. And I think one thing we've talked about is maybe striping a trail through that section. On that north part of the road, there's there's about forty two feet of asphalt there. And that would kinda get us up to the Powder Mountain Highway um or Wolf Creek Drive, I guess it's also called.
One fifty eight.
Yeah. Um then, then we'd have the new trail down to uh closer to River Drive. There's a existing path, gravel path on the south side of the road down there uh that would kinda continue traffic down or pedestrian and bike traffic down to River Drive. Um that's kind of the segment we're looking at. We had asked for in our budget, two hundred thousand to do the um path widening on the bridge. Uh and and you added that to our budget this year, and then our plan was in the next coming years to continue to ask for two hundred thousand in twenty twenty six and twenty twenty seven uh for this path, so it's not something that's been allocated yet, but something we were uh planning to do. Um we would need to go through the procurement process, because it is uh of a dollar amount that we'd have to do that. So I've talked to Jason Horn about that. Um he says we can try and facilitate speeding that up by having a a shorter window of when it's out to the public uh for bids, to get bids on this project. Um I I asked Steph to come to assure you that I'm not just pulling numbers out of the air, but that we do have how much approximately in our impact fee fund for the Upper Valley?
So right now, as of the end of twenty twenty four, there was nine hundred thousand in that fund balance for just the upper trails, and keep in mind that we do have to use our impact fees that we collect within five years. Uh this would uh help, um we do have some that we uh some of the funding that we need to have spent by the end of the year. Uh as Ashley said, there was two hundred thousand that was put in the budget this year specifically for this project with another two hundred thousand over the next couple of years uh to work on that project, so I don't see any issues with speeding that up if we use a little bit more than that this year. So an extra one fifty above our budget. Any, do you have anything to add, Sean? Question, Furor?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, so um that's a great spot for a trail, by the way, I've already had some people contact me, and I think there's gonna be more traffic on that road over the future than we may anticipate right now. Because uh, thanks to John. Um in a good way, so but my question, how how do we tie in with one fifty eight or Wolf Creek? You know, so the, I know where the trail ends right now. Um as you go up, you know, past the market and it kinda dead ends right there by the golf course or close to it. So how, I'm just trying to figure out from where the existing trail ends to where this starts, how are we gonna get people from one spot to the other? I mean, I'm fully in favor of it, I just I don't like having trails to nowhere. I I don't see people going up and down there, you know, for going back and forth. Let's give them a route around there. I don't, have you got an answer to that or?
I brought my trail expert friend, Charlie, with me. Ash and I had a really good conversation about that, making sure we're not building trails to nowhere. Um right now, uh with one of uh the projects that uh John and his guys are doing, the exchange, which will be coming to you guys uh next month for a final decision. Um he's committed to building a trail to the northern most most part of the golf course. That still leaves a little bit of a gap, we have about an eighth of a mile left up that highway. Now, the one of the things that we've been talking about, one of the things the planning commission has asked of you guys in that decision is to figure out how to make that connection from the end of that trail or from where the trail ends right now, maybe not even going all the way up over to um fairways, over to um Eagle, Eagle Crest and um uh bridges, the bridges, which is the northern side of of Wolf Creek. Um they said, we don't wanna specifically say where we want it to go, maybe they don't want it to go right on one fifty eights, right next to the cars, maybe it can go through the golf course. There's a variety of different ways that that can happen, um and I think John agrees that, you know, maybe we don't tie him down to one specific route, but rather let him figure out how to make those connections. Um long term, uh whether it's going through the golf course or going along one fifty eight, I think you're right, we need to have that uh connection. Right now, we've got trails that just kinda end in some places, and we're gonna see a lot more of that in Western Weaver. Uh as we've got some farms that are uh uh filling out uh and building and other farms that aren't, and old subdivisions that never had the trail thought about. So we will have to fill in those gaps, and that is what impact fees are for, is to help fill in some of those gaps. Um do we have a long term plan? The long term plan is that that trail runs up high when one fifty eight and goes to fairways. But do we have the financial wherewithal and and how we're going to an idea of how that's gonna happen right now? We don't.
Well, and I I'm not saying the best spot, I'm just saying, hopefully we have a future plan for
To connect.
Where it goes.
Thank you, Commissioners, um if you don't mind jumping in, so I've I've been working with Ashley and Charlie and Rick and everybody a lot, and we're very, very, very passionate connecting the trails all the way across that whole section. I I wanna see the preserve, you guys know where that is, all the way to Eden Park and and beyond. So there's there's only a few spots left open, so from Eden up to Wolf Creek, almost the exchange is done. From the exchange, a little bit further north, the Elkhorn is something we've committed to on on the exchange. Um golf course right in the middle, and then you have, you know, fairways and and Eagle Crest and bridges. And so we are working this summer to be putting in the trail through the bridges and either this summer or next spring over to uh the preserve, so the preserve will be able to get to fairways within the next twelve months. On a big twelve or ten foot wide asphalt trail, so now you've gotta get from the bridges, fairways across to the golf course. And and then also along fairways is a big deal, and it kinda was on the plans, and then it dropped off the plans, and now we're talking about it again, and I'm glad to hear we're talking about it again. At the end of the day, you guys, I've committed in my development agreements that you guys worked with us on to fund or back fund the fairways project, I'm not at three fourths, but at that whole. We're very grateful for the development agreements we put together, and we can supply a lot of that road base to fairways, frankly, and also the bike trail, so you know, my my request continue continuously is let us help you guys with the bike trails along fairways and others. Um I did, while we were talking in the lobby there, actually, I did check with Geneva on a point uh eight four mile trail, ten foot wide, three foot asphalt, eight inch, little bit of grading, they're in about a hundred and hundred and seventy versus three fifty, so.
Seems more reasonable to me.
Well, you know, I, who knows what what they may administer, you know, that's just a really quick back of envelope, but I think we get involved, we help, you guys do it all. But at the end of the day, you're doing it, you're paying for it, and then you're asking me to reimburse from my I F D, we can totally do that. Hopefully, we, you know, keep trying to save everybody money. But I'd really like to see that bike trail going, and I'd be glad at the end of the day to pay for it, we we need to pay for it, and it's gonna be a great amenity. And then the only thing left is through the golf course, which I think is the appropriate place for a trail, we just have to figure out a way to do it without getting people killed. Not sure which is more dangerous, golf balls or cars, probably cars, but.
I told John, you just gotta give out free helmets, make sure everyone's wearing a body cage or something as they dress.
So that that would be a great thing, if we could connect you know, that far north with that far south.
No, I'd be great. Well, I'm in favor of that, I especially with the impact fees being on shortened timeframe here. Um and yeah, I'd just say that three fifty for that amount of trail seems pricey, but.
Well, it was, we were kind of high, just, okay, that's kind of a ceiling, you know.
We'll see when you go out.
Yeah, we yeah, we took that number based off of the Wolf Creek to Eden Trail, there were some cross slopes and stuff like that that we had to deal with on that, I think that one turned out to be like a total of, I wanna say it was like seven fifty or eight hundred thousand for a mile and three quarters, and so we just kinda cut that.
You had all the mailboxes and driveways, and that was a nightmare. I think that had a little more work than this one does. This this one also probably has some drainages we'll have to cross and some things like that, which requires more embankment as well, too, so.
We'd be starting over off the Osprey Trail.
Sure.
And that's a pretty good, yeah, comparison.
Pretty close.
Yeah, pretty close.
So Commissioners, what this would do is we would, if you're comfortable, we'd allocate the money out of the impact fee fund, and then um uh Mr. Lewis would help pay back his portion of that, his frontage of that, which would then free up that money again to go all the way down, if you could, to the park, to the Liberty Park, and that would be Liberty Park over to um uh the bridges, all the way down to um uh Eden Park, uh way down south, as soon as we get all those different connections.
Is there any way to connect into Huntsville?
It uh it would connect Huntsville.
Goes there on the.
So Huntsville qualifies for the Goio funding, it's six hundred thousand dollars. Um it's the funding that they presented at Waco, so there's a backend funding mechanism.
So the trail already goes to Huntsville, so this be, so you got Huntsville already connected to the Eden Park, which is connected to Wolf Creek.
It pretty much dead ends at the roundabout being constructed right now.
Is it in the new incorporated area?
Portions of it are.
The new city.
Portions of it are in Huntsville.
That might work, let me, let me talk, I'll just reach out, just to find out, we didn't get a little bit of that money. Is that New City we call for? Yeah, that New City would, and Sherry would probably be really excited about that, I'll reach out and see if we can get some funding. Uh Commissioner Harvey, anything we haven't covered?
No, I I I, you have my support on this, but I just want to be clear, I am in support of billing, building trails to nowhere. And one specifically is that we could use these impact fees to go from the highway all the way up, uh trap, the old Trapper's Loop Road. I'd like to start putting a little pressure on Morgan to see how they're gonna answer that problem in the down the future. All you gotta do is get that land back.
I do have one question, Steph, and this is probably not even relevant, but um if we spend the impact fees within their timeline, and then there's reimbursement from John, does that reset whatever reimbursement we get from him? Do you know?
I don't know, I'll have to check on that, not sure.
I mean, with all the trails that need to be built and other things, and I'm assuming impact fees, we probably wouldn't have an issue, but I was just curious. Okay.
Can I chime in there?
Yeah.
Ashley, is there a way that we could spend those impact fees on the road and swap some of that Waco funding to the trail? I mean, it's all part of the same project, and if it's all funded, I'm not sure it matters where those go, but if John's reimbursing Waco money versus impact fees, that might work a little bit better with the.
With the timeline of of impact fees.
So that's something we could talk to Brooke.
Yeah.
Figure out.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, we're gonna meet on Wednesday to talk about um some of the development agreement with John and and that.
Okay.
How that will all sort out.
Ashley's gonna twist my ear.
Well, I think you have your answer then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, our next item is a closed session to discuss purchase lease or sale of real property, so the intention motion for that?
Motion, Lee, work session, go to closed session.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
Motion to leave this session, which I will entertain now.
Motion to leave the closed session and go to back to the work session.
Okay, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries back in a public meeting on item five.
Madam Chair, add motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned right on time, two thirty.